We call to order the November 7th meeting of the public housing history. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
My pleasure to be here today. I am the governor of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment?
Yes, sir. Yes, so. I'd like to remind any speakers that we'd like your name and your municipality residence, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. First on the list, Jim Lochheys.
I'd like to move we give the former commissioner all the time he needs to speak.
I'd love to have a lot of time.
Man, I wasn't kidding ya.
Well, I'm here this morning to address the Sunnyview Nursing Home and Rehabilitation Center issue. I'm somewhat confused by the entire process that has led up to the proposed marketing and selling of our Sunnyview home. Mr. Penkerton, when we took office six years ago, one of the first moves you made as chairman of the board was to appoint a special committee, about eight or nine people, all well-qualified, to come in and do an overview on the operations of our county. Special committee, after several months of review, came back to us with many suggestions on how to better run the county, and we, the board, implemented many of those suggestions for the government and the betterment of the county. Question: Did you appoint a special committee to review the operations of Sunnyview Home before deciding to sell the complex? Instead, you contracted with a Chicago firm to market and sell Sunnyview. And, Mr. Penkerton, is this the same firm that you brought in for our county four years ago to appraise the facility? Then after the appraisal, they offered to buy the facility for $6.3 million? In addition, Mr. Jim Roddy, former Allegheny County Executive Director and part of the ownership of St. Barners', was brought in to meet with us, the Board of Commissioners at that time, to help us through the process of selling Sunnyview Home and Rehabilitation Center. Was his firm interested in purchasing Sunnyview? Another unanswered question. Where did the $13.2 million starting bid figure come from? If you were to market and sell Sunnyview, you, as the board, are putting in restrictions on how to sell the home and who will operate it. How will the union continue to function, and how clients or patients will be accepted to the facility? If the home is currently losing nearly $1 million a year, how can a firm expect to make a profit by accepting the demand that you made? If sold, cuts will be made to the staff of Sunnyview, care for the patients will then decrease. It is my understanding that the board is not bound to accept the highest bidder in the selling process. I wonder why? The union has agreed to make concessions that would save the county nearly $1 million a year. Sit down with the union before you make a final decision. Yes, other counties have sold their nursing homes, but if you look deeper into the reasons they were sold, logic has prevailed. As an example, Beaver County was a 520-bed facility, Butler County, I think, was a 200-bed facility. Mr. McCary, where's your compassion for the people of Butler County? If you sell Sunnyview Home, I have one final suggestion and direction to this board. It comes from an old parish priest, Father Weisenger, who, after hearing our confession, would give us these instructions I'm going to give you right now, as you leave this office two years from now. If you sell Sunnyview Home, make a good act of contribution, see ten Hail Marys and ten Our Fathers', and drop some money in the port box on the way out. Three final questions.
That's time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to extend to get him this final one if I wait.
This has three minutes.
So you won't give a former commissioner any more time, though?
That's fine.
I want to know it.
I'm not in favor of it.
I'm not in favor of it. Okay. Former commissioner, talk.
I think you cover this point.
I think you should have left and finished that and do this back.
Good job, sir. Anything?
Next is Terry Penron.
Terry Penron, I'd rather have you. Good morning.
Hi, Terry.
Greed, what is it? Well, its definition is as follows: excessive or rapacious desire, especially for wealth possessions. Rapacious desire, that's a powerful statement, and definitely applies to this whole Sunnyview situation. I was unemployed at Sunnyview four years ago, but I did watch on TV how the whole "take the contract or I'll sell the place" rhetoric was being spewed. And here we are again. Difference is, we, the union, countered you guys with a two-year contract that was worth a savings of $1 million-plus dollars to the taxpayers. We just handed you a million-dollar bill, and you threw it back out. This contract will fix it for the long haul. It would make Sunnyview no longer a taxpayer burden. Why are you, the commissioners, not willing to accept it? Why is it that you turned it down? Is it egos? Is it greed? Tell us, the taxpayers. Explain to the residents of Sunnyview, hell, they're taxpayers and their voters, too. We do have a right to know. I'm sure after all this is said and done, the target on my back will be even bigger. But I believe in standing up for what I feel is right. And I truly believe that this wholesale of Sunnyview has been planned all along. In closing, the Butler Eagle last year had a story that read, "Property taxes to go up because of Sunnyview's deficit." You raised our taxes one mil for 2013. Now, my question is, if Sunnyview is sold, are you going to give us the taxpayers that one mil back? Or was that just a scheme to have your new building built?
Peggy Aberson?
I'd like to answer Terry's question. I want to have a follow-up there. I don't believe these two commissioners are ever going to give you tax dollars back and reduce your taxes, okay? That's my... I've never met, had a meeting since I've been in this county that we talked about cutting government through health care. The only cuts we're going is at Sunnyview. I've never had one meeting in a year and three-quarters about changing, removing a few employees. We have 700 full-time employees reviewing different government agencies within this government. No, we never did it. They're not going to cut your taxes, they're just going to increase it. Okay? I've been here this long, they've never done it in a year and three-quarters, they're not going to do it. I begged them to... 180 of the highest-paid people in this county to... BC3 just makes their teachers do 15% of their health care. I begged these guys to do 15%. BC3 did the right thing to keep BC3 solvent. Will these guys do it? Hell, no. They wouldn't even consider it, okay? They don't want to control taxes, they just want their way. I'm done.
Good morning, Peggy Aberson, Middlesex Township. The holiday season will soon be here. A good way to support your local nonprofit agency's cause is to purchase items from them as part of their fundraising efforts. One such nonprofit is Glade Run Lake Conservancy. Purchase your Betsy Ann chocolate orders by completing the form from their website, which is www.gladerunconservancy.org, and a portion of the candy sales goes to the lake restoration effort. It sounds like a pretty sweet association, a win-win for everyone. If you need any further information with regard to the Glade Run fundraiser, you can contact Margie Mortiardi at (724) 316-7893, or Becky Miller at (724) 898-8100. Another such nonprofit is the My Bike Program through Variety Pittsburgh Children's Charity. Variety provides adaptive bicycles to children with disabilities, which provide them the freedom and the joy of riding alongside family and friends. Although Variety takes applications from families throughout the year to identify eligible children, what child wouldn't like a bike for his or her holiday gift? Interested individuals, businesses, and corporate contributors or sponsors can contact the program coordinator, Sandra Thompson, at (412) 747-2680, and bring joy to a child this season and give them a bike. Thank you.
Mark Vaneski?
Good morning, commissioners. Morning, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
I didn't talk at the last meeting. I was scheduled to. I didn't see the point to it. I said, I don't even think myself when I asked for a sale of Sunnyview in the past. Everybody in the room knew exactly what I thought. Everybody's sitting back here and up front. I didn't think it was very nice of the media people to boo me before the meeting when I said, "Who else?" They cheered Jim Exton when he came in. They booed me when I said, "Okay, who else is here to speak on behalf of the Butler County taxpayer?" I'm serious. I mean, this comes to a taxpayer issue. I did like Terry's idea of going back and cutting taxes if Sunnyview is sold. I think that's a great idea. Since the taxes were raised for Sunnyview, again, they should be cut because we no longer have Sunnyview. That one I liked. I did take an issue with the fact that a private business could not run at home as well as a public entity. I don't agree with that at all. I think a lot of our private business, I'm looking at private business up here, are run very, very well. I don't know much about running the nursing home. I do about golf courses. North, okay, a little bit of my golf course. North and South Park both have golf courses for Allegheny County owners. Stanley Park has a golf course, which is owned by the city of Pittsburgh. Any golf course in Butler County is nicer than those three courses, and they're mostly privately owned, with the exception of the country club, which is, they're just way above everybody else. It's a very nice facility. I did like the article that Commissioner McCary wrote to the Eagle, if I didn't say that. I thought that was very nice. Buy time to home, and my intention was trying to do, I think he did a good job of explaining it, and I think it was more than fair to everybody. Another point, I was at Butler County, I got a lot of different meetings, and I went to Butler school board meeting, and they were there, they had to cut funding for a computer teacher at a center town's elementary school. Now, you guys know I do a lot of work with kids, and kids are important, and that. One thing with Sunnyview is, if it is a private business, you've got to pay property taxes, so that gives us the school board a little more room, a little more revenue to operate. Please, Mr. Exton, if you don't agree with that, I'll say it.
I'll mention it.
Okay, thank you. If I say something's wrong, like I said, please, please put it up.
It's not wrong. I don't want to interrupt you, but you didn't say anything wrong.
That's okay. Okay, that's it, that's all I was going to say.
Thanks, Mark.
Christina and Mike Handley?
I guess I'll start. I'm Mike Handley from Allegheny Aquatic Alliance. My wife here is Christina Handley from Allegheny Aquatic Alliance. I'm the vice president, and this is the president. We're here this morning to thank the commissioners in Butler County for the support with the Conicness, excuse me, Conicness and Creek Cleanup. This last year was, again, another big success. We were able to remove, now in two years, 85,000 pounds of garbage out of the Conicness and it wouldn't be without, you know, the support from our community and our Butler Township, our community. And Christina's going to explain a little bit more about this year's upcoming cleanup.
So, again, we just want to thank you for the support. Like Mike said, we got out a very significant amount of garbage within just the last two years, and that's only been on two cleanup days. So, you know, it just really shows the amount of garbage that is in that creek and, you know, the continued support that we're going to need to be able to get out all this garbage and really restore it back to its natural, beautiful state. So, we're hoping that because of our results, that in the future, Butler County will continue to support us on this cleanup. We also brought a few letters and T-shirts just to thank you for the support this year.
That was it. We were really here just as a thank you. We appreciate the support.
You know, you guys have it wrong. We're the ones that should be thanking you, not the other way around.
You're very welcome.
You have done so much in that cleanup project, and it just infuriates me that you even have to do that, that people are so ignorant and crude that they dump stuff in the crips.
Right.
It's just beyond the common sense that anybody with screw tires, or appliances, or whatever you pull out of that crib.
It is terrible, and again, we would probably estimate it maybe, on the lower end of maybe 20% humid ignorance, the rest of it is a lot of flooding, you know? That's a lot of it.
But in that, it's ignorance of, you know, people who don't put their things properly away after the summer season and, you know, with the flooding, that it comes into the creek after, you know, the winter season.
Love the hunting camps, you know, people that have their family out there in the summertime, they have their kiddie pools and their barbecues out there, and then all of a sudden, the water races up 12 feet higher, off it goes.
I mean, specifically, this year, we got out, well, I mean, total, we got out 900 tires. This year, we had two couches, a whole porta potty, a bunch of different appliances.
Lots, lots of appliances.
A riding moniker, again, so it's just like you...
A car frame, a wagon, part of a frame with an old haybag in. I mean, the list just goes on and on. I mean, in previous years, the year before, coffin vaults, all sorts of crazy stuff we pulled out of there. You name it, we pulled it out there. So, our ongoing goal is to clean all the 50 miles and get out all that garbage.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
That's it for public comments, sir.
Excuse me, we have one more signed up here.
I'm sorry, it wasn't listed as speaking. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I did, but she listed it.
I'm sorry, it's not here.
You didn't check the box for yes, but you're certainly marked.
Oh, I see. It was written in the line above, which was a staff member, and typically, since she hasn't made it on the agenda...
Thank you very much.
We would let her speak during her agenda, so I apologize.
Good morning, commissioners, and I'm very happy that I'm not sitting in that seat anymore. I've asked for time to speak about the Sunnyview Home. My husband spent two times in the rehab center. He received excellent care, and we weren't in a position to go to any place within the area that we wanted to. Sunnyview accepts all Butler County patients. Have they always made money by doing this? And the answer to that is no. Each year, they've lost less money. Should the government make money for its services? My answer to that would be hopefully working harder with this project, that Sunnyview would come to a break-even status. When it was known as the poor farm, residents worked on the farm, kept cattle, and raised much of their own food, because many of them had no homes, needed a place to live in later life, and then needed care. The home came to the point of becoming a nursing facility at a very good length. I would compare it favorably to any other nursing home in our county. The mission statement of the home is to provide the best quality care for the residents of Butler County, never compromising care, kindness, or concern. Since the present board has decided to sell the home, I was asked the question, why did they not make this known when they ran for office as county commissioner in 2013? This would have given the public a chance to have a referendum on the issuance of sale. This is a bigger issue that involves the entire county and people's feeling about this matter. You're interested in having another building here at Government Center. Is this sale to help you with the addition of this building? I can assure you, your legacy will not be the building you add at Government Center. You will be known as the board that sold Sunnyview. Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, we have a minute from our October 21st and October 23rd meeting. Does your motion approve those as credits?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The minutes are approved. Old business?
There's none today, sir. We do have a proclamation. This proclamation is in recognition of National Adoption Month in Butler County, November 2013, whereas all children deserve strong families who are there to protect and love them. Every year, thousands of Americans are sending a gift of a family to a child through adoption. During National Adoption Month, we recognize the compassion of adopted and foster families and renew our pledge to find loving and stable homes for children who need one. And whereas today, more than 15,000 children remain in foster care in Pennsylvania, finding families is the goal for waiting children in Butler County. Many of these children are brothers and sisters who want to grow up together. And whereas currently, Pennsylvania has more than 800 children waiting for an adopted family to be identified. In 2012, over 2,000 children from foster care were adopted in Pennsylvania. And whereas every child deserves a place to call home, National Adoption Month is an opportunity to spread awareness on behalf of the children of Butler County who are waiting for a loving family. Now, therefore, we, the Butler County Board of Commissioners, do here microclaim the month of November officially National Adoption Month in Butler County. In honor of National Adoption Month, we encourage the community, businesses, groups, schools, faith-based organizations, and families to help secure permanent loving homes for each and every child in Butler County, regardless of race, age, gender, health, emotional or financial challenges, and past distress. Signed, Board of Commissioners, William McCary, Chairman, Amy L. Davidson, Vice Chairman, James Exton, Secretary. And here to accept the proclamation are Nikola Burdette and Serena Johnson from our children and services.
Kevin Gray, not mine, it's a long issue.
Thank you.
If you would like to speak.
This is our 60th Annual Adoption Day in Butler County. This is one of our biggest events yet. We're having a reclaiming children adopted on November 22nd, whether they're both privately and through children in years. So, we're very excited. We have lots of events planned and gifts for the children. And we just want to thank all of our sponsors that donated to this event, all of our service providers, all the peace workers, and especially all the adopted families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, our first item today under the assessment office, we're asking for your ratification of a service agreement with CompuCom Inc. for the Digital Scanning Project Act in the assessment office in the amount of $6,645.52.
Does your motion approve this?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
Next, under human services, community action and development, on behalf of Janine Kennedy, I would ask for the following approvals. Number one, approval to enter into agreement with Butler County Human Services for cost reimbursement for transportation services provided through the shared ride transportation program. The term...
I'll make that. I'm sorry. Do you want to want to watch?
If I may, I will finish this item. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013, and the amount is not to exceed $45,000. We ask for approval.
I'll make that motion. Sorry about that. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
Next, we're asking your approval for following reappointments to the Community Action Advisory Board for three-year terms expiring November 2016. Diane Marburger, Dr. Jerry Heller, Beth Harold, and Joseph Bobrow. You can take these as a group or individually.
I'll make the motion for all four of them.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
Commissioners, I apologize, I do need to add one more name to that. Guy Trabaglio was also asked to be reappointed to the board again for a three-year term expiring November 2016.
Is there a motion to approve Guy Trabaglio for reappointment?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'd like your approval to appoint Amy Tebay of the Salvation Army to the advisory board for a three-year term expiring November 2016. This is a new appointment.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, under planning bridges, Kevin Gray.
Good morning. Good morning. This morning, I'd like to ask for your approval for the sister, Mike English, and I to enter agreement with Zillian Opelborough for the repair of the road approaches at the Iron City Bridge, whenever we can get the bridge.
I'll make the motion.
Does your second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
The thing is, Zillian Opelborough is actually paying our bridge crew, paying all the expenses we're supplying to the labor.
Yeah, well, they'll pay, yeah, they'll pay for the approach work, yeah, so I have crew's labor and materials and everything.
That's just the approach.
Yeah, it's just the approach is a little simplified.
Okay.
I'd like to say this, I'm glad you've worked with Zillian on that. I think it's a really neat project. It's a high travel. Once we get the survey in, it's a lot more travel than we thought, but I commend them for working with us, you know, on that project.
Okay. Does your motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
And second, I'd like to ask for your approval of placing orders for a new tandem truck for the bridge crew to place existing one. We'd like to take it for 2013, because if we wait till 2014, there'll be an additional federal emissions tax added, and we're trying to avoid that.
This will be in '14's budget?
Yeah, this will be in '14's budget.
Does your motion approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion, I don't know if the commissioners, if you remember at Monday's meeting, I thought that the only down payment we were sticking on this, or placing on this new order, it's a $173,000 truck, or we were around that. And I think Kevin made a good Marty talk to us about it, too. And I think it's well-needed, and that's not my question at all. But in government, I'm really concerned about how the back will seem to put either nothing down or as little as possible. Well, here again, we do it on this, $173,000, and the only thing we're going to put down is to trade in for the old truck, which is $9,000. I don't do that on my own. When I buy things, I try to put more than 5% down. I mean, I think we should be 15% or 20% down. I think this is a capital expenditure. I don't know what the other two commissioners, I just want to bring this to the public and like that we never, governments doesn't do like the private, or private, you know, they don't put anything down. You just charge everything. I think we ought to, you know, we have, we're selling the old money that we can use for capital expenditures, and what better capital expenditure would this be than we are going to fix bridges throughout the county? I cannot think of a one. Infrastructure is in terrible shape. We need this. Why can't we use some of the money from that and put down an extra $50,000 to keep the budget down with the bridge crew? I think it would be sound fiscal management. What do you guys think?
I think we have to look at the budget first. If there's any evidence we could possibly do that.
So, are we going to pass this on the contingency that we're going to look into and get back about putting more down, or?
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
All we're doing is placing an order, Tim.
Okay.
I just decided how to pay for it yet.
All the favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The motion carries.
That was an aye for me, too, okay? By the way, we have a spec sheet in my folder here, I'll show it to the press afterwards, that it states that, you know, the idea, what the concept is, okay? The concept is in the sheets, I'll show it to the press.
That should also be in their media packets. Under recycling and waste management, Cheryl Kelly.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Cheryl. Today, I have a report on the bid opening that we did on Monday, and that is for waste and recycling services for all the county government buildings. And this is going to be a three-year contract. It expires November 30th. And what we did was, the facilities department does a really detailed spreadsheet, very comprehensive. They can specify the type of, the type of container, the size of container that we need, any extra pickup charges, and what the bidder does is just fill in a dollar amount for every one of those specific items. And we did it for three years, different prices for each year, and based on what we received back on Monday, and those, those sheets are available for public inspection, they were made part of the public record, we are going to recommend a warning that bid to waste management based on those prices on their, on their sheet. And there was about a $16,000 difference, which can vary a little bit depending on if we would ever need an extra... on if we would ever need an extra container, which is something they bid on. And I ask for your approval to award that contract to Waste Management for three years based on those bid prices.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Thank you for all the work you did, Cheryl. It's a hard thing to chair my room.
And the Facilities Department, who did a fantastic job with catch doing the populations and everything.
Those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
First item of other Commissioners, we're asking your approval of the third amendment to lease agreement with Loop Region Associates to extend the term of the lease for the Prandery National District Justice's office space. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, I would want to note that we had a discussion at Monday's meeting about a possible revision to the lease that would prevent the county from terminating early if it were able to get into the new building earlier than we anticipated. The landlord has agreed to that language, and you have to revise the document to approve that.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Carries.
The next item, we're asking your ratification for an acknowledgement and indemnification agreement required by First Energy in order that they would safely cover their electrical lines around the Core House and Government Center so that our facilities crew can complete the annual inspection of the exteriors of our buildings. We'd ask your approval.
And that was for how much?
I believe it was sixteen hundred and thirty-four dollars and change. That is a regulatory fee that First Energy is required to charge the county for that safety cover.
Is there a motion approved, this?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we would like your approval to issue an RFP to Market Sunview Nursing and Development Center. This is for the request for proposals that would go out to potential bidders to purchase them. We have to answer any questions.
Is your motion approved, this?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
I'd like to say this, I'm against this. I didn't think we gave the union a fair opportunity to get back to us on the amount, and I don't think we ought to get the cart before the horse here. I think we owe it to the community to slow this process down and have the union bargain in good faith and let the union come in here. So I am definitely, the union's gone overboard. They've really done a great job in trying to make and caring about Sunny View, and trying to make it viable, and make zero or two-hundred thousand costs off of twenty million. It's a twenty million dollar, you know, budget every year. So I think they've done a good job, and I'm against trying to market Sunny View.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we'd ask your approval to authorize the chairman to execute a professional services agreement with Clark Hill Ford Reed of Pittsburgh to provide legal services relating to the potential sale of Sunny View. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Discussion on this, I'm really concerned. It just truly amazes me. I have a contract with me here. This whole contract pops up on my desk, and, you know, pops up, I'm handed this contract, Mike English went over it. It's five pages long, very detailed, and today we're approving to give them the job to do it, except they're already on the job doing it. Now, that's really amazing to me. When I'm in business, I didn't really, I mean, they're on the job, they completely did their job, and today we're approving it, and I could prove to the press or anybody. Now that, boy, that's pretty amazing to me. You know, that you don't even approve it, and I asked Mike English about it, I guess he said they decided it's okay with them, they'll just trust you, you know? But I don't know, I'm certainly displeased with that. I only have two days to look over that, look over the five pages. One thing that I want to comment on, that I didn't like about it at all, and this is really good, specific with me, the other two Commissioners want to have, there's a proposal in there, that Sunny View will be taxed for the first ten years, no matter whether a nonprofit buys it or a private entity. Well, that is not for me. Okay, I'll make this point right now. Look, Westinghouse got a fifteen-year tax abatement, zero, to help big business. Now we have the senior citizens, the disabled, and the mentally impaired, and we're going to tax the hell out of them, or tax a nonprofit. I think it's ridiculous. Everybody here knows that if you have an ambulatory care center, no matter whose it is, Lutheran Home or any private nonprofit, why would you want to do something, an organization doing nonprofit work? It's not even a close call. That, you know, if they apply, so the first year, ten years, they want to tax them, you know, to give more money to the county, you know, I'm all for taxes, but I'm not for taxing hospitals and ambulatory care centers. I think it's in this contract, and when I vote no, mine's a no vote for senior citizens and not tax in hospitals and ambulatory care facilities. It's ridiculous, you know? I'm done.
All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
That's all for new business.
Motion to approve the budgetary transfers?
No.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is your motion approved, the new hires?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion approved, the current.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? A motion approved, the re-qualifications?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Is there a motion approved, the check register?
No.
Is there a second?
I'll make the motion. I mean, I'll second, I'm sorry.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Report, please.
Yeah, my report today is about Sunny View. I, most people know this by now, but I'm vehemently opposed to selling Sunny View, Butler County's safety net for our senior citizens, the poor, and the disabled. At the October twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen public meeting, Commissioners McCarrion and Pinkerton voted to authorize the chairman to execute a professional service contract with Marcus and Munchap of Chicago, Illinois, for the purpose of evaluating marketing Sunny View Nursing Home and Rehab Center for sale. Miraculously, they did the job really quick, the sale price was, they did it really quick, they came up with a thirteen-point-two million price tag almost immediately. Boy, that's, that's, sounds funny to me. Community action is needed here to stop the sale. I do not believe the other two Commissioners think they were elected to be part of a representational democracy, but instead they think they were elected to serve as autocrats representing the social elite and big business. What's made Butler County special, when I did my, reached one of my lifetime achievements in saving our hospital, Butler Memorial Hospital, we united both the rich, the poor, and the middle class alike in a cause for the general public's good. Our objective was to keep a full-service hospital in Butler County that was financially solvent. Together, we achieved our ultimate goal of keeping twenty drug and alcohol beds, twenty Alzheimer's beds, twenty mental health treatment beds, and twenty transitional care beds. We did it for a cost of a hundred million dollars less. Joan Chu was on that committee, and so was Bill DiCuccio. She was here with us today. The new hospital would have been void of those needed areas of care. I am very proud of our accomplishment in keeping Butler County with a truly independent hospital, which is not part of a huge conglomerate like UPMC or Allegheny Health System. Butler Health System controls costs much better and is still a true nonprofit, full-service hospital for our community. Now Commissioners Pinkerton and McCarrion want to relive this saga with our senior care home and relinquish all oversight to either a for-profit or a nonprofit entity, all in the name of improvisation. Neither one of them campaigned on selling Sunny View. Neither one of them campaigned on supporting unfair labor practices. Neither one of them campaigned on pulling the safety net from our seniors, our physically disabled, and our mentally challenged residents. Why would that be? Might it be they would not get elected on their truly ideological self-serving positions? I'll let you decide that. Neither candidate got elected on the pretext of selling this long-term support system for our elderly. They did not. I know because I was sitting right next to them beside, in the public debates and events. Next, I'd like to go over a few key points in Sunny View's financials. The financial losses at Sunny View in the past eight years, and in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen projected years, have been grossly overstated. Sunny View's loss over the ten-year period from two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen is projected to be approximately seven million dollars. This number includes a paper loss of three million dollars in depreciation over the same ten years. But what McCarrion and Pinkerton are not telling you is, that Butler County received a grant of over five million dollars to refurbish Sunny View, and access to mineral rights, which sold for three-quarters of a million dollars. A five-million-dollar grant from the state for our seniors, it was earmarked for that, was returned to Butler County taxpayers for the care of elderly and disabled. No payments, no interest, no property tax money of the residents. The five million and the three-quarters of a million dollars are not being included on the balance sheets. When you deduct the five and three-quarter million from the overall loss of seven million, the balance equals one and a quarter million dollars lost for the same ten-year period. This year, they included four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond payment as a loss, but nowhere in the past ten years is a five-million-dollar grant to be found on the balance sheets. What kind of, is that? You include the payoff, but you don't include the cash you get from the state. This averages out to a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-a-year loss over a ten-year period with no debt. Sunny View is completely clear of debt. Given all the money the county spends on services, this is a necessary expenditure for our vital community need, taking care of our most vulnerable. What businesses, whether profit or nonprofit, can be successful in the long term and not invest in capital expenditures? Not a one. Combined this with the state and the federal grant, governments give back approximately a hundred-and-twenty million dollars of your tax dollars to Butler County every year. It is perverse at the county level. The additional sixty million dollars in our budget it takes to run the county comes from your spring tax dollars. The fall taxes go to the schools. Why was the five and three-quarter million dollars left off the balance sheet? The three-quarters of a million-dollar windfall from mineral rights, Sunny View was diverted to the general fund by Dale Pinkerton, okay? It was diverted to the general fund. What was the money used for? I believe the five and three-quarter million dollars was purposely left off the balance sheets to perpetuate the myth that Sunny View must be sold for financial reasons, not a true need to save the taxpayers from overwhelming burden and crisis. The public is being deceived. Furthermore, after the October twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen public meeting, the union forwarded its counterproposal to the county for consideration with the Commissioners. McCarrion and Pinkerton are not willing to go back to the table. The union made over six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in long-term concessions, long-term, not flash in a pan, this is the long-term concessions to keep Sunny View viable for now into the future, almost one and a half years before the contract was even up. I believe that a great effort was put on their part to come to the middle and to serve our seniors and those less fortunate in Butler County, as well as keeping their own families intact by maintaining their jobs. These concessions put us at only three-hundred-thousand away from break even. And since then, I believe the union has come up with even a new proposal to get us at zero. I believe that it's our fiscal obligation of the county code to negotiate with the union, reduce union, to reduce operating costs at Sunny View regardless of any sale. The union meant us over two-thirds of the way there to our goal of breaking even. With the upcoming Sheetz revenue and Sunny View share of the natural gas revenue starting in January two thousand and fourteen, I believe we are over the hump and even considering marketing Sunny View for the sale. This county gym is not, is on its way to recovery for the vital need in our community. Now is not the time to sell Sunny View. Why are they railroading this sale? What are the true motives and facts for these quick actions to fulfill ideological fulfillment of improvisation and interested purchasers cement their, cement their RFPs, and they can pick whoever they want? Is there an idea of, they can pick whoever they want to buy this, it's not high or low, they can just pick whoever they want? Union busting, is that their idea? Retribution against Dr. DiCuccio inspired by Dale Pinkerton as executive director at Sunny View while he's working there for free? He terminated Bill DiCuccio as executive director when he wasn't having any pay. You know, now there's a real good idea. Why sell when the union is willing to negotiate a fair and equitable settlement? What are the McCarrion and Pinkerton's motives? Let them tell us. Sunny View has been a fixed genetic community for over a hundred years, serving seniors, the working poor, and the disabled, the middle class. Private homes can share, pick whoever they want. Why do you want to go, where do you go if your money runs out due to severe medical conditions? Okay? Long-term disability beyond your control. Sunny View is Butler County's safety net. It's been there for four generations for our parents and grandparents. We need to reflect on the morality and values taught in Sunday School and churches youth. Our society is judged by how it treats our children, elderly, and the most vulnerable citizens. Let Butler County be judged, and to be found to be compassionate, respectful to its seniors and senior citizens. Let's protect our elderly population. This must be our legacy. We live in a representative democracy. The Commissioners were not elected to be kings of grand popes for four years. Some lawmakers think they are entitled to royal, as royalty. If you speak, it's your job as a community to speak up and show them they are not. They're not kings. The United States did not bomb Syria. Why not? Because the public spoke out against it. They were tired of the wars and the money going to fight, enclosing. Not only do we have a fiduciary obligation to maintain the.
That's fine.
Can I finish this?
No.
This, I'd like to finish. Thank you very much, Bill. I really appreciate, I mean this, too, I appreciate it. Not only do we have a fiduciary obligation to maintain a hundred-year-old county asset, we have a moral obligation to our seniors, our disabled, our mentally incapacitated residents. It is the job of government to provide a safety net for our community members. It is the job of government to provide support and treatment for those with Alzheimer's and dementia. Is it the job of Butler County to privatize and sell off all government institutions and not provide public safety net for those who have mental and physical disabilities, including including those seniors who have resided and contributed to Butler County their whole lives? Well, it might be McCarrion and Pinkerton's job, but it sure as hell's not my job. Bill McCarrion blurted out one day to me, "I'm a born-again Christian." Well, Bill's definition of born-again Christian is different than mine. Mine is, what would Jesus do if he were alive today? He surely would not be removing Sunny View from Butler County's controls. There are leaders and followers in government. Bill and Dale are followers. They will sell Sunny View because, they want to sell Sunny View because other counties are selling their nursing homes. They want to sell Sunny View because they can't build their building without more cash. They want to take on more and more debt because federal and state governments have more debt. Okay? Well, I'm a leader, not a follower. I don't want more debt, I don't want higher taxes, and I sure as hell don't want to sell Sunny View. I want to move Sunny View into a productive future. Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you very much, Bill.
Bill? Good afternoon or good morning, folks. Throughout the process of selling Sunny View nursing home and rehabilitation facility, Commissioner Eckstein will continue to blame us and prior county leadership for its financial mismanagement. Folks, when you were elected into this office, you assume the past decisions of previous boards and you make the best situations possible under the circumstances of the present time. Commissioner Eckstein doesn't seem to understand this. We would rather waste everyone's time and energy blaming everyone around him and deal with the matter head-on and take accountability because he has no solution for the county. The total money Butler County will save as a result from this endeavor remains to be seen at this point in time. After all, how much money would it take a private owner to turn around the ship in the right direction for Sunny View to be a profitable and sustainable institution? Would it take $1 million, $2 million? No one knows. It may take more and it may take less. The point being, what we know now is that for the past 10 years, Sunny View has been a financial liability on the county's books with a $7 million loss in the past 10 years. That we do know. We know it's projected in 2014 to have more than a million-dollar deficit. We know that too. We know that as county leaders, we can no longer expect local taxpayers to bail out the facility regardless of who or whom is to blame. And it's a variety of factors, folks, not just one or a group of people. It's a variety of things such as past decisions-making, such as county financing changes, increased state and federal mandates and regulations, the increased cost of doing business, increased inflation on operations, increased salaries and benefits when you have employees in business, less funding from the state and federal government. All these factors and many more have played into the contributing towards this outcome. The money Butler County will save as a result from our personnel and staff who are involved in some type of working capacity associates with Sunny View will be cost savings that we will be able to invest in our county government in new and innovative ways for the betterment of Butler County and those current costs and not even factor into the overall financial loss. The manpower and time previously dedicated to Sunny View will now be dedicated to other areas of work needed here throughout the county for the betterment of moving the county forward, and we should all be excited about that. Mr. Eckstein would not understand this business model as he has cost our county expenses to deal with his nonsense for the past two years. And folks, that is an actual cost of our county. For the manpower, time, and energy, he and his assistant have caused all our county departments for their ends. Yes, last week and the weeks to come, we will be emotional during a sensitive time in which the ownership of Sunny View could change hands from the county to privateize. It should be emotional as the decision affects many lives and livelihoods. We will take measures as your county commissioners to assure the public and the employees that no one has turned away for care and to retain as many of the original employees as possible to allow the transition to be as positive as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to address a couple of issues today. First of all, at our last meeting, some statements were made about what the county spends money on, and they were very misleading. One of the speakers stated that the county gives money to places like Irene Stacey. We do not give money to Irene Stacey. We contract to Irene Stacey to provide services that the state mandates us to provide. This money comes from the state, it is not county tax dollars. The biggest area though that was mentioned was an organization called Southwest Behavioral Health Management, which is located in Lawrence County as their office. This organization receives $28 million a year through Butler County. This money comes from the state and the federal government. It does not come from county tax dollars, although we pay the state county taxes, I realize that. The services that we receive from this organization are mandated by the Department of Public Welfare through the state's Health Choices Program. The funds, as I said, are entirely federal and state dollars, and they are only passed through the county. There are no county tax dollars or local tax raising efforts involved. These funds can only be used for licensed medical health and drug and alcohol services for Medicaid-eligible county residents. The funds have no relation to nursing home services. There's no way that we could give those funds to Sunny View homes because it would be illegal. What is Southwest Behavioral Health? Southwest Behavioral Health was established about 10 years ago. It was actually the idea, the brainchild of the director of Human Services here in Butler County, and he served as the first president of it. It was a consortium of six counties in southwest Pennsylvania. The agency, the Southwest, I'm going to refer to them as the agency, they would assist the counties, the six counties, in managing their health choices contracts with BPW. And they would provide oversight of the managed care organization that would operate the services networks of hundreds of providers. In Butler County, we outsource over 85% of our human services that we are mandated to provide. If we didn't, we'd have probably another 200 or 300 employees in the county, but it's much more economical and works better if we outsource them. And we do this through this organization, Southwest Behavioral Health Services. The mental health and drug and alcohol county administrators believe that by combining the resources and their expertise, they would create not only quality services, but they would also have significant savings to the counties involved, the six counties. County administrators service the board of directors for the Southwest Behavioral Health Management. This is to ensure that the agency is responsive to the needs of each of the six counties and their residents. Our human services director, as I said, was elected the first president of that organization. These six counties now serve over 120,000 lives in western Pennsylvania. 120,000 are serviced by this organization. Through effective management of the Health Choices Program, Butler County was a supportive Southwest Behavioral Health Management, saved Butler County $1.2 million last year because of the efficiencies that they were able to institute. And this money that they saved enabled us to provide more services to more people, the people who are suffering from drug and alcohol problems, from mental health problems. We were able to service more and service them better because of this. The information presented at the commissioners' meeting was a disservice, not because it wasn't a factual statement, but because by omitting some of the very important background, it left out what is necessary to completely understand what this organization is and why money goes to them. We don't give them money. Money goes through them to provide services that we are required to provide for BPW. I would also like to address the, some of the, I call it voodoo economics that Jim stated in his presentation. Incidentally, he left you out, Mr. Lockheiser. You were, he said it was Dale Pinkerton who gave that money to, or took the money from the Marcellus Shale leasing and put it in the general fund. Where else would it go? It goes to the general fund. But in his newsletter, he names you and the other two commissioners, not just Dale. He also talks about, talked about healthcare. Why don't we charge our employees 15%? He wanted to charge all the non-union employees. He threw in a misnomer there when he said that. He said the 15% would only be the highest-paid employees. But there are employees that are non-union that are paid less than many of the union employees. We have some in our office that are paid less than union employees. Would it be fair to charge them more for their healthcare than it would be the union employees? I don't think so. I think when we do this, if we ever do charge more, and I hope that we do someday because our healthcare costs are continually escalating, it has to be across the board for all employees, not just for non-union employees. We should not penalize them. Also, the $5 million was mentioned. Why isn't that on the balance sheet? The controller would argue with you there, Jim. That is on, was on the balance sheet. That money was given to us to make capital expenditures there. It was not given to us to relieve the pressures or the deficits from the operating expenses. That was for capital expenditures, that's where it was used, and it was run through the controller's office. Also, he mentioned, why would we put in the RFP that we can pick the successful bidder? It doesn't have to be the high bidder. The reason for that is because if this sale goes through, the commissioners will have the opportunity to visit other sites that the successful bidder has before we award a bid to them. We want to make sure that our residents have the best care, and they will have because we will visit the other sites that these bidders operate, and we will make sure that they are within the standards that we want to see for our residents. That's the reason that Jim mentioned at the, one of the meetings, I believe our, I don't know which one it was, but that we can pick our buddy. Well, I don't think Dale has any buddies. I don't have any buddies above the $13.5 million to buy a nursing home, so I won't be picking my buddies tonight, I'm sure Dale won't either. We're picking the best person to buy our home. The other thing is, there are more than a dozen nursing homes in Butler County. To say that our residents will not get good care is to say that all the other private nursing homes and non-profit nursing homes are not supplying good care to their residents. And that is just a misnomer. There is 180,000 people in Butler County. A lot of those are going to require nursing home care. Sunny View cannot possibly provide all of them because it's just not a large enough home. Sunny View in the future, combined with all these homes, hopefully can supply the needs of our senior citizens who require nursing home care. And that is our goal, to provide this care to the residents of Butler County. Things have changed. Sunny View was originally, as I think Joan Chu mentioned, the county poor farm where people went who didn't have anything. That's changed. It's now a nursing home, it's a quality nursing home, no question about that. And my goal and Dale's goal, I believe, is to maintain that quality care at Sunny View Home. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to adjourn.
Is there a second? Those who say they would be in line?
Aye.
Leading his adjournment. Kayla?
Thank you, Commissioner. Did the board decide what specifications you're going to put into the RFP for potential bidders?
We have an RFP, I believe we can give that to them, can't we?
It should be in your media package.
That should, oh, okay, I guess it's in there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCary, how do you respond to Commissioner Eckstein's comments that Clark Hill, Fort Brink has already begun work?
I'd ask a point to respond.
That's much like the ratification we did with the First Energy thing on an earlier item. They haven't done much. They consulted with me and assisted me in the preparation of drafting the RFP. I told them that they could not be paid or approved until today. They were willing to take on with the understanding that in the event it didn't prevail or they weren't appointed, they wouldn't be paid. So they were willing to do that, and I don't see anything unusual about it. It's not an uncommon thing that happens here when we need to pay for a service or a product, and we do not yet have a meeting scheduled. So something unusual about that at all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCary, do you want to comment on the union's unfair labor practices complaint?
I don't think I should comment on that because- [Crosby] That's pending litigation. We'll have- [Crosby] That's pending litigation. I don't want to comment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Tom?
Yes, thank you. I don't recall the timeframe, but I believe it's been a while since the penalty phase ended, that CCAP grant, where you couldn't sell the home without paying some of the money back.
It ended, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It ended June 30th.
Of this year.
And that was a grant from CCAP, the $5 million? And every year, it reduced a million or a million and a half dollars until it was refunded. And that was to, we had to eliminate 20 beds up there to put that in, okay? But we made it then private for the rehabilitation center, and it has been a big help. But it wasn't as though, that was a grant and the grant got paid off, and I believe it was five years, but it might have been four.
I think it was five.
I don't recall, but I thought that was, that obligation was discharged in 2010. Am I misreading?
No, it just finished last year. Jim?
Thank you. A couple people have made comments that two of the commissioners did not campaign stating their intention was to sell Sunny View Home. Would you agree or disagree that you were even contemplating that at that point in time?
I didn't campaign at Sunny View Home, no. That was, I didn't campaign in everything I was going to do. I didn't campaign in building a new building. I mean, when you get in this office, you look at things and you see things with a different light than when you were campaigning, and you make decisions based on information you didn't have when you were campaigning.
Can you say at that point in time when you were campaigning, you were not thinking about selling the home once you were in office?
I was not.
Commissioner Pinkerton, at some point, did you decide you wanted to sell the home?
Well, as everyone knows, four and a half or five and a half years ago, we did a search on it, and we had the same company do a study on it. And as I see it and have continued to see, it continues to lose more and more. I, at that time, if someone would have asked me, you know, I mean, I was undecided at the time, and then we have been trying to make, we got rid of the laundry and saved money and things started, but just the 3% increase that would have been this year is almost $400,000, and then you put the hospitalization on top of that, you're looking at another half a million dollars' worth of expenses pretty close to that operation. And all I can see is going the other way, and I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of Butler County. And as Bill stated, we really are going to research it, and if we do get the proper company to purchase it, I would say that I'm for moving forward. And we'll take care of everyone. We'll guarantee the fact that the people that are there will not, no one will be thrown out, and we're going to keep as many employees as we possibly can.
Commissioner McCary, do you, thank you. Commissioner McCary, do you recall when you first contacted Marcus and Milichap? How long ago that was?
It was several months ago, I was talking to, they contacted me first.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they called me one day and they said, "We heard you were anticipating selling Sunny View Home," and I said, "No, at this point, we were not." This was maybe, I think it might have been after CCAP conference. At that time, I said, "No, we're not." So when our union negotiations did not go the way we thought they should go, then I And they're already, they're aware of where we nursing home in Pennsylvania and what's going on there, they have information on them all.
So do you call it month they would have first called you?
I do not.
Okay. A comment was made, county would have to necessarily take the highest bidder. Mike, is that true?
Yes, this isn't a situation where the county is bound to take the highest bidder, and I think as the commissioner stated, they wanted to reserve the right to not be bound by that, so as to ensure that, I guess it would be the highest responsible bidder. They don't want to be, they have their hands tied by someone who might offer a large check but not be someone you would want to sell a home to.
Now, you'd have to be very careful on that because you could open the county to legal issues if you didn't award it to the high bidder and they could prove they were responsible.
No, it's not, that was a poor choice of words. This doesn't fall under that part of the procurement code or statutes where you have to use the highest responsible bidder, say by recent example is the jail, where if you're, that's really the lowest responsible bidder. If you come in low- [Crosby] Right, right. -you almost are bound to take them. So those rules don't apply to a transaction like this.
Okay, okay. Thank you. On the comments, Jim Roddy's name was brought up. Beginning with the time that he volunteered on the committee, to any of the commissioners' knowledge, has Jim Roddy asked anybody on behalf of representing a healthcare company ever inquired about buying the Sunny View Home?
He has not.
He has not asked me.
Hasn't he?
Commissioner Eckstein, you brought up Bill DiCuccio leaving as executive director. Are you saying there's more to it than the public resignation he gave at a meeting?
There's absolutely more to it. Dale Pinkerton forced him out, in my opinion. That's my opinion. He was forced out.
He was forced out because Bill Decuccio has been a strong supporter. He was forced out by Dale Pinkerton because he's, you know, because I believe Dale is a very arrogant person and he wants to get back, and he delivers each other, okay? I believe that's what he did.
Commissioner Pinkerton, do you have a response to that?
Well, as I remember, Mr. Decuccio, he's a doctor, he's a physician. And if I, if I'm not mistaken, there's another commissioner here that could verify that.
So you never asked him to resign or told him he had to resign?
Bill decided that he wanted to resign. He asked me if that's the way he could do it. That's exactly what we.
And Mr. Lockheiser, is that your recollection?
Yes.
Commissioner Eckstein?
He did it because, I know from a fact, Bill Decuccio did it because he didn't want to be taken away from being the head physician up there. He could have been removed from being the head physician and the executive director, so he made the decision as a compromise to do that, that he was forced out. You make no mistake about that. Who, who takes somebody off that's not getting paid at all from a job that he's really good at and qualified to do? Who, who does that? He was forced out, okay? That's a joke.
And just finally, commissioners, would you be willing to add more conditions than the ones listed in the letter to the editor?
Have you seen the RFP? I think there's a, you have a copy of the RFP, and I think the conditions are in there.
No, if you have that, I think so.
What?
If it's not, we'll make it available.
Yeah, it should have been.
What was in the letter is a generalized statement, obviously.
Right.
So the RFP is more detailed. Additionally, the commissioners, as stated in the letter, will have an opportunity to interview and will interview these people, where additional questions will be asked and additional information can be obtained if necessary. And then the final step in the evaluation would be onsite inspection of the facilities. The commissioners will work with the consultants that we have that helps us work with the home, the management of the home, and Marcus and Milichap to develop questions to ask these folks. So the RFP is sort of a beginning of the process. It is certainly not all inclusive in the sense of what will be asked of these people.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Bill?
As you mentioned, Jim Roddy, you said, "No, he has not come forward to talk about this." Has anyone come forward to you folks yet, the initial, the initial approach, saying you're not hearing this is possible, this might happen, or interested?
No one has contacted me personally, but I've heard that Marcus Milichap has had a few inquiries, but I have no idea who they are. And I don't know why Jim would bring up Jim Roddy. I mean, he has nothing to do with us.
And that was four and a half or five and a half years ago when Jim Roddy was on a committee, and all he did was help us on a committee with eight or nine other people. So, I mean, this was just, he donated his time for us. He gave his thoughts as to what we should do.
Commissioner Eckstein also talked about you. He said you two wanted to have it as a taxable entity for the first 10 years. Is that true?
Can I speak to that? There is a provision in the RFP. It is likely that the perjuncer would be a private entity, but it's possible that some large healthcare conglomerate, I mean, UPMC isn't in this business, but by way of example, that's a large nonprofit entity. It is not a nonprofit in the sense that most of us think of them, but they are. In the event some conglomerate of that nature would purchase the home, the RFP is structured that they would require to enter into a pilot agreement with the county for a period of 10 years. A lot of municipalities, I'm sure you're all aware, have problems with shrinking tax bases that are exacerbated by the fact that large nonprofit entities are located within them, and this is intended to alleviate that concern and would in more to the benefit mostly of the school district, of course, but also the township and the county.
Is there a percentage on the pilot?
The agreement is set up such that they would pay the fair market value of the home for a period of 10 years.
And Bill, I might add to that, that it is not the county commissioners' prerogative to do away with property taxes. We could do away with the county's portion, which is about 20%, but all three taxing bodies would have to approve if they were to give any kind of tax relief. But the school, of course, is the largest taxing entity.
Bill? I'd just like to say that, come on, come forward here saying Barnes could buy it or some religious-based organization could buy it. We know that, and to put the burden on them of paying full property taxes when you damn well know that they qualify hands down legally not to be taxed exempt is BS. They don't qualify. It's ambulatory care. We're not going to town and ask about Sunnyview. They qualify in a minute. I mean, unless, if you, if anybody thinks in this room any different, they're very badly mistaken, and I don't think that we ought to hurt these religious organizations or people that are based for, to care and compassion, or that's what their mission is. Their religious mission. I don't think we ought to ostracize them. That's my opinion.